It's nine o'clock, uh, welcome everybody in person and everybody on the phone and, uh, Skype, uh, will you plead silence or shut off your cell phones and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, Melanie, additions or, uh, deletions of the agenda?
No, neither.
All right, uh, can board have anything that he wants to add or delete?
No.
Good, so we do have Mr. Stratton on, but he's, he's timed at nine thirty?
Right.
Okay, so, Mr. Stratton, we're gonna go ahead and do some other things, uh, you actually are scheduled for nine thirty, are you okay with that?
We... Perfect. Okay, oh, he's good, okay. We, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you yet. It says that he's on.
It is.
Maybe we can fix this real quick.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay.
I don't think he's muted.
It doesn't say he's muted.
Yeah, there's no line through his microphone.
Well, let's mute him real quick. Okay.
Okay, while you're working on that, we'll go ahead.
Okay, yep.
Some others.
I think he's fine.
I think Buddy wants to get in and get out of here, so Buddy?
I'm okay, whatever you guys...
Well, we're gonna bring you up very first, um, come on up to the chair, please, sir. So, I'll, I'll just give a quick overview before he goes right into us, uh, him and I have worked on his budget and we've talked quite some time prior to this about, uh, temporary line item within his budget.
Okay. We, they, they just...
And, and with that, um, I overlook, haven't even come before the board commissioners, because any addition of any personnel has to be approved by the board of commissioners. There's no absolute guarantee that he will hire or he'll hire right away, but it seems like strategy to hit.
Yeah, so, the part-time individual that we're looking at to, to hire is for help with our closure of our landfill. Uh, I put seventy-five hundred dollars in there for the, for the part-time position. That gives me roughly forty-six days of help with the landfill closure. Um, that part-time person is set in there, I don't, I don't know what logistic strategies we're gonna go with yet on that, whether that be, um, somebody that we hire and train for the, um, the scale track and the tipping floor, that, that, that'll free me up, an individual that, that is usually there all the time anyways to help with the closure, or is it someone that we hire for, um, our equipment operating, um, and just come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays and give me that third person to haul material to the, to landfill closure? So, but, but that individual needs, uh, I, I think we need to hire that individual for at least summertime work and, and, and help us get that landfill closure, closure done. So, we don't plan on, um, you know, we plan on, we plan on working through that throughout the full summer, we don't have the manpower or the, the equipment, obviously, to, um, jump in there and get it done in, in two to three weeks, where we're just not there. Um, so this person, it'll be, it'll be strung out throughout the summer of work and digging our new cell, obviously, and that, and that material will go to the landfill closure as well. So, um, that, that's, that's what that part-time individual can be used for.
So Buddy does that, are you gonna use this person like if somebody's on vacation too, or sick, or?
Um, yeah, we could, yeah, um, definitely, that, that, that would be, that would be something that we'd use actually, yes.
So hopefully you can get somebody that you can cross...
Hopefully we can get somebody that's very well-rounded, you know, and, and maybe, maybe, maybe this'll work out and we can continue, continue this with next, next year. Um, the way we're gonna pay for this individual this year, um, will, will actually be with the closure fund, um, so.
Because it's actually for the closure.
Exactly, it's for the closure, yes, yeah. Yep.
So, I'll move to approve the temporary position for the landfill effective July for next budget cycle.
Seconded.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Buddy, appreciate it.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, um, do we have Kevin Hawk on the phone? Kevin, are you on the phone?
I, I am, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can, uh, let's, let's, uh, you're next on the list, talking to Culver here.
Okay, so hopefully in front of you is a quote review for a large culvert extension. Um, the, the pipe question, if the three of you are familiar with the location, is on Dog Lake Road, um, it'd be the second time that you cross the water user canal. And when we did that project, um, it, it didn't allow for as much clear zone as what we, we should have there and try to maintain in the future, this culvert will allow us to do that, and it'll, it'll minimize some, some maintenance expense going forward and, and, uh, help, help fix a, a safety concern as well. Um, it is, uh, needed to improve some clear zone. In front of you should be two quotes, one from contact and one from, uh, Pacific Corrugated. If you look at the Pacific Corrugated quote, uh, the top part of that is if we would want to install a multi-plate, or, uh, what I have labeled there that says a hundred ninety-nine pounds next to it is, per foot, is an actual one, one-piece application where we would excavate, put that one piece in and put a band on it, and then we could, we could fix this problem, so. I, it was very difficult to find a third vendor or a third contractor that would make that size, because it's a very odd shape, you can read there, eleven-ten by seven-seven, um, an odd shaped pipe, elliptical pipe, so it was difficult to find three vendors, so we're going with two.
Very good.
The cheapest being, well, if you add the pipe, the twenty-foot stick of pipe and the band together should come to seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and seven cents.
Uh, any questions with Kevin?
Nope.
Is that, is that from the Pacific Corrugated?
Yep.
Yeah.
The pipe, the pipe extension will come from Pacific Corrugated, yep.
Okay, thank you. I had entertained a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the pipe extension for the Drews Canal from, uh, Pacific Corrugated for a fiscal impact of seventy, uh, seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and seven cents.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the, uh, Pacific Corrugated pipe quote at seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and seven cents. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin, did you have anything else while he was on the phone?
I don't, but thank you very much.
All right, have a good rest of the day.
You too.
So, uh, looks like might as well jump on with me next here. Um, Pam, I see you're on the, yes, uh, your time for ten o'clock, um, I think we're gonna be ahead of schedule, um, Lane is before you, but, uh, so, welcome, we'll get to there, get to you when we get there. Um, next is my request through, um, I guess you might as well say through myself, through the fair board and the Roundup Association, you have in front of you, uh, draft, um, of the water extension for the Roundup time and the fair time and for other events. Uh, this proposal, I've talked to you guys a little bit about it, it's come down to, uh, much more solid, I don't have absolute numbers, to be perfectly honest with you, that's the reason why those documents are not in there. Uh, this will be done with, uh, mostly volunteers, it will have to be some, some, uh, hired, uh, labor and machinery for this. This would be putting a two-inch line from the fire hydrant, if you look at the draft, it, uh, is right there by the, where the re-ride room is, hook in the two-inch, then it'll be a trump line all the way out to the ATV site, that will be all two-inch lottery rooms going out with, uh, stand pipes, um, the yellow, I mean the green sheet behind it shows the north direction, uh, there is a couple other short two-inch runs that we'll do, um, just for their capacity. I've worked with the local plumber, I've worked with the town of Lakeview to make sure that we have adequate pressure, adequate volume, and, um, that's on the water side. I did not give you any schematics on the sewer, we have a sewer issue that's underneath the trees here, um, by the, um, grandstands, and it would be also putting in, uh, certain length, redoing certain length of the sewer line also, because we have a problem with a couple nineties that's in there, have a problem with roots, and this too would be volunteer time to do that. So my, my question, my want would be to leverage eight thousand dollars from the video lottery dollars of your project, under economic development, um, and to, up to eight thousand dollars, and I, I could come back, I'm not sure on that, to be honest with you. The Roundup Association has said they will give two thousand, the Fair Board will give two thousand, that's total of twelve thousand. Be perfectly honest, as frugal as I'd like to be, I would like to leverage, if you guys approve the video lottery dollars first, and if we could save for the Roundup or the fair, not getting into their budgets, especially with the perceived slowdown that we may see this next year, this is where I'd like to be, but, um, uh, and I'm also, as I'm bringing this forward, looking at my two fellow board members and know how much they'd like to volunteer, that I think shovels would fit your guys' hands if we move forward with this. And, uh, I know, I...
You're asking, you're recruiting.
And I'm recruiting, I'm recruiting at the same time, and I do have pictures of Commissioner Albertson with paint on his hands, like he got close enough to paper as we done the grandstands there once, so, but, anyways, my request is three thousand dollars out of the video lottery. Um, open to questions, I have, I do have a quote that I did not put in there from local, uh, paint hardware for materials, it came in very good, it has to be shored up, the reason why I didn't put it out into the public meeting is because there's some parts that happen, but it's not a complete quote, but it's got close enough that I believe that within the budget of numbers I'm talking, we will be fine, uh, the...
Within the twelve thousand or the eight thousand?
The twelve thousand.
So, so Brad, on, on the sewer line?
Yes.
Are we, can I completely reroute that so it's not even around those trees or can we?
No, but, where, it'll still come the same route, the problem is, is that the sewer line is the old terracotta type stuff and the roots that went through it, so using the new ABS pipe, the region won't be a problem. Uh, whereas the old days, it went right through the unions and everything.
So I wonder, are you gonna take out quite a bit of that terracotta just to get out of the roots?
Yeah, so, from, from where the grandstands are and where the restrooms are the grandstands, it'll be, put sweeps in there instead of nineties, it'll come all the way across over to building number two, the corner of building number two.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll be all the way to there where it's been scoped and it's been rotor-rooted, um, so it'll get through the trouble area, um, to go from there all the way to the state highway is just a little bit too drastic and that definitely be a problem.
You're just gonna go to the exhibit, from the grandstands to the exhibit building?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right behind the museum.
Yeah, it'd be...
Around the museum.
It'd be nice just to replace that distance of pipe with a new, because, you know, otherwise you're gonna have problems again.
You know, whenever I talked with the public works director, Jeff Marshall, he seemed to believe that we were good if we got past those trees and he, he'd be involved, but it could be something that we have to look at in the future, absolutely. So, uh, other questions?
No.
So I...
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve eight thousand dollars out of the video lottery for the fair group project with the chance for amendment later.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve eight thousand dollars out of the video lottery dollars on the project, potential to come back for amendment later, uh, discussion? I, I did wanna recognize, I talked to Melanie, which, uh, manages that budget for us, and made sure she was in the loop on the Dalton, and so I'm, I'm pretty excited about this guidance, I can't think you guys know. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. It will be a challenge for social distancing, so, um, you guys make sure you have a six-foot shovel.
I'll take a...
I thought, I thought I was gonna get James going on, but...
I'll take a hundred-foot...
I was about to say, I was thinking, I might just bring a backhoe and just like, you know, keep my social distancing that way.
There you go, thank you guys so much, um, Melanie Guzzini is next with the ODA wolf compensation and financial assistance.
Yep, um, so I applied for this grant, I didn't think we'd be awarded anything, but we were, we haven't had a lot of wolf activity, but now we have a pair that's up north, so we have a thousand dollars for projects such as bone pile removal and education outreach.
And so we need to approve this as it comes in, I see action, consideration, or we need to do a motion and second to approve?
Please.
These dollars coming in.
Excellent, good work on that, Melanie. So Mel, so this is for bone pile removal and education, so that it's not depredation or, if, somebody loses livestock, or?
No, so if someone loses livestock, we apply for that through the board, our committee, and then it's, um, reimbursed at the end of the year. This is completely separate.
So...
So like, you lost an animal, you'd come to us, we'd make the application, um, to the ODA, and then at the end of the year, they will pay you out for your loss.
But this is only for education and bone pile removal?
Right.
See, this is another thing, like we were talking last week, about how important it is to have, um, I guess, like, on the, where they pick up the dead animals, the, uh...
Oh, rendering.
Rendering plant, sorry, and how important a rendering plant is, is not only to meet packers that could possibly move into Lake County, but also, you know, getting rid of...
The producers need it.
Right. Producers need it, it causes, you know, chances for disease and everything, and so...
Well, I, I have to elaborate a little bit, I've really become educated on the wolf side of it and with the bone piles, and, once a wolf comes to, let's say, a rancher's bone pile, they will continue to come back there every year, every time they get a chance, even if it's white bones, and so one of the biggest things is, is to either have those buried or get rid of it, so what you're talking about, if there was the rendering plant, like there used to be for the, the lost calves and lost pheasants and everything were picked up, we would reduce the amount of interaction of wolves with the ranching community, or the potential to do that, if they picked up any of it. I, I was blown away, um, even, even out in the wild, they say if there's white bones and that wolf goes there, they will go back to that spot, and, and if you think about, coyotes probably are no different, so once they go to that bone pile, you're getting every coyote in the neighborhood coming into, so, but... Yeah, it's really, really been educational, where you're going with the commissioner, I, I agree, it'd be great, have another tool.
That's just one more tool that we can use, you know, trying to get these rendering plants back in business again because of EPA DQ regulations, and so...
And, and Melanie clips out and works, she's one who works on the wolf thing, um, a lot, you guys have suggestions on any different educational way we're doing it, or to educate our producers out there, get them to Melanie, because we have a great wolf committee, but we're always looking for new ideas or something maybe we've missed, and, uh, we've, we've done a good job in soil-water conservation, send it out, and the letter is my correct, that's who sent it out, and the letter, and stuff, from education side, so, you have, you have any ideas, just get them to Melanie.
My, my only comment on that is there's way more wolves here than people think.
Absolutely, but in Oregon, you, you don't have a breeding pair until they have, there's the two pups that survive, I think it is, and then, um, there's, there's a lot of things that don't make sense to the average person, but, and then you don't have a pack until they, so much is documented, so one of the things, whoever did them on this side, delisted, they're fed, still federally listed on this side of highway, three ninety-five, and I don't know the pack boundaries, is the more sightings, the more that's approved here, the better odds of them being delisted and someday them being managed by the state of Oregon. Um, I don't think you'll ever see tags given, but they might be managed in a way that certain components of the hunting groups get to be part of taking some of them out at some point, but until there's a documentation that proves that they're staying here and they're sustaining themselves here, um, we, we'll never get them delisted on that side. Yeah, so, it's quite interesting, the wolf side of it. You have more to add, Melanie?
Thank you, Melanie.
So I'll move to approve the ODA wolf depredation compensation grant as received.
Seconded.
Been made, seconded, any further discussion? We've had all the discussions before, Jamie.
Yeah, that's good, though.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, so, real quick, uh, meeting minutes of three thirty-one, three twenty-seven, four three.
Commissioner, I would make a motion to approve the minutes for March thirty-first, March twenty-seventh, and April third.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve seven minutes, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so we're ahead of the timeframe, but being we're close to the public, I think we can go right ahead with our presenters, you guys good with that?
Sure.
Mr. Stratton, thanks for, uh, setting through our meeting, do we have him where we can hear him now?
I think so.
Yeah, I'm on.
All right, so the floor is yours, sir, and welcome.
Thank you. Well, um, commissioners, it's been a while, but a lot of people come and talk about an issue we have at the high school and middle school, and it's also kind of rolling down to the elementary, where we have three different populations of students, students who are successful in the regular brick and mortar, students who need a little help outside the brick and mortar with the, with some brick and mortar support, and then students who cannot be successful for multiple reasons in the brick and mortar, and so what I'm looking for is trying to figure out how we can serve all of our students. Our, um, distance ed has changed over the years, used to be, back in the day, CLETA and COIC, and now we call it step-up and it's on campus, and I think it's been that way for three years, and with it being on campus, it's hard to also have it on campus and follow school rules and make it fall through the school process, and so what I'm looking for is another alternative education opportunity for our students here in the county. And I apologize because I haven't done all my homework, um, the COVID virus has created a little change in policy and procedures here at my job, and I've been working more on that than this piece, so I don't have much out there, I just, I know that there's support, I've reached out to a few of you and a few community members, um, I know Mr. Greer's there, and my, there's my staff that also would love to see something like this, and so I'm just asking for some help and support and maybe even some direction on how we can look to, um, setting up an alternative education site here in Lake County, but off-campus, possibly not ran by Lake County School District number seven.
So, repeat that last part there, did you say not ran by school district seven, or ran by school district seven?
Why do you, willing to do both, but I think, um, a lot of times I think it's best to be off-campus, and if it's off-campus, not ran by a Lake County School District employee, um, because then it gives a little bit more freedom, um, to policies and procedures that sometimes kept students from being, um, successful in a school setting, so, um, we would, we would support with, with certain things, but I think more of like how CLETA and COIC ran, where it wasn't part of the school district.
Yeah, and, and so, I'll, I'll kick off, I know that Mr. Albertson has a lot to say too, is, uh, when COIC was doing it, very successful as far as I'm concerned, and I believe the school also, we had a hundred percent graduation rate there for quite some time, and, uh, it all boils down to funding, and I think that's where, where we have to get creative, try to figure out the funding, I, I don't know the funding that comes through the school for the alternative ed, um, we worked with, uh, Dr. Gutierrez, some on it through KCC, um, I believe that off-site is a key thing, Mr. Stratton, for this segment of a lot of the students, I, I think they excel under some of those situations, and, um, actually, um, we have documentation of some that become very successful in life, so I'm encouraged, I, I think what we need to do is probably the one commissioner, along with, uh, a group of people, as a committee, to bring some thoughts forward possibly, and that's off the top of my head, as a board of commissioners, we haven't had no in-depth discussion yet, so I'm throwing that out there and just, uh, saying I'm super supportive, it all falls around being able to fund it, so, Mark, or James, do you have it?
Do you want to go first, because I might be...
No, go for it.
So, I totally agree with you, Mr. Stratton, um, I believe it's gotta be off-campus to make it work, um, the work program has to be hand-in-hand with it to make it work also, um, I think it's just a matter of schematics, how we set it up and where the money comes from, and, um, as you well know, that, uh, these, these young people that are going into this class, um, whether you call it step-up or whatever you want to call it, they will not learn in a conventional manner, and, um, but many of them flourish in the other environment, um, I've seen it firsthand how it can work, and so, I would be more than happy to come alongside and, and be in a partner with the school district, um, I think the groundwork, the foundation that we lay is the most important, um, because we've seen that what it would do, um, without that, um, so I guess that's pretty much my conversation right now, is let's lay a foundation on how to make this work and a, a community partnership, uh, I, I'm still in contact with many of the kids that I worked with when I was at the juvenile department, and of course, the juvenile department's gonna be, has to be one of the partners in this, because, um, you know, they kind of run hand-in-hand, and so, but I mean, I've seen kids prosper that you wouldn't give any hope to prior, and so, I think we need to get together and start working on this. Who do you think needs to be on the team, Lane, besides the county and the juvenile department and of course, the school district?
I think there's possibility, um, somebody from KCC, uh, or possibly even, uh, the COIC folks or the CCC. the C O I C folks or the C C C, the people that have been banned, I think there's, those two groups would possibly need to be on board also.
Um, up, up in hand, the, the C O I C is having trouble financing itself right now, even though it's an accept, a successful program with the kids, more and more state funding is being depleted. Um, the Wyoming rules and regulations, they've ruled and regulated themselves right out of productivity as far as.
When you're, when you're successful, that you lose funding, basically, but it all, involved.
So, Jake.
Yeah, Mr. Stratton. You know, Jake. Hey, I have, about a month and a half ago, I, I entertained a meeting, um, with, uh, K C C, and we were talking about our jobs program and the We All program, being ran downstairs in the courthouse, of the courthouse. And during that meeting, I, I brought up the fact, um, that they, the school this potentially was looking at some changes um, in, uh, alternative ed, and they encouraged us to include Chip Massey in that conversation. So I think Chip should probably be involved in that conversation.
Yeah, and I had, I had a to-do list yesterday to give Mr. Massey a phone call, and, um, it just didn't happen. So he's the guy that I was gonna reach out to on this also.
Sounds good.
There, there's a, there's a couple private outfits that I'll make contact with to see if we can get financing also or help with the financial parts of it. Um, I think we need to be very fluid in our decisions on how to base this, because a really structured plan that the, the youth have to abide by is not gonna work. And that's what you're seeing with, you know, your rules at the school, and so, um, so as long as we're fluid when we set it up and allow things to change here, and what works, we can keep using, and what doesn't work, we have no problem getting rid of. And so, I'm definitely on board, Lane, so. What were you thinking as far as off-campus, was the school gonna pay for that, or what are you thinking?
You know, I haven't had, had much conversation with the school administration or the school board on this. Um, mainly it's been, uh, parking lot conversations with a few of you that are in the meeting today, and some staff here at the school trying to figure out how we can better serve, uh, our students. Because we're, I, I miss in a small group, no matter what plan we do, there's a small group that struggles, you know. Right now, our current step-up program is flourishing with the kiddos in it, besides a few. And then we have a few that have dropped out or gone to a different education homeschool route, that I think if we had something off-campus, they would also be successful. So it's, it depends, one, on staffing, and two, on the population. And you know, our, you know, our current staffing is reaching a population and doing great, you flip-flop it, and then we'll miss out on a group of kids. So my, my plans, my hopes was to reach out to you all, and I like the idea of setting up a committee and start penciling something out and making sure that the foundation is set. So when we say, yeah, let's do it, we have the answers to all the questions already there and to get it in place and get it running.
So, Mr. Stratton, um, on the, and you probably can't answer a lot of these questions, but there is a certain amount of funding that comes down on the alternative ed to the school, correct? That could be used even if it's on the off-site, uh, campus or building?
Well, right now, we get funding, um, we're funding our school through like, um, some of our step-up kids through the Measure ninety-eight, which is to help, uh, freshmen's on track in alternative ed. And then we get some backup funding from K C C, um, and it's a weighted funding on how many students we have and how many credits are taken.
So I think if we pull together the committee and, um, find out what kind of dollars there is right now, and then that should be able to show what the shortfall would be for it to be sustainable, the dollars that we have to try to leverage from wherever we leverage those. Um, I don't know those numbers, I have no idea, but that's the reason why C O I C is not present here, and the reason why they're not gonna be present in Clement County, I believe, is the leverage of dollars that just started going away, so it's gotta be sustainable, finally. Because it's, it's just too valuable of a program for, for our kiddos and for our future, and so. But in a way, I see it.
How many, how many kids do you have that are considered homeless in the school district? And that, that's including kids that parents aren't around, that might be couch hopping, you know?
Oh, I don't, I don't have that number off the top of my head, because the homeless definition is, uh, multifamily, uh, homes that are portable, so there's a lot of definitions that are different, and I don't have that on that via Mrs. Chavez's question, I don't have that with me, I can find that out for you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's important, because I, I didn't realize that we had that many kids when I was in the juvenile department that actually really didn't have a place to go. Um, some of them were in abusive families, and, um, they, they were still there, and no matter what we did at school, they still had to go back to that environment. If we could figure out some way that we could allow those kids to be out of that environment, I think you'd really see them blossom, so.
I, I think I'd like to see the correlation between those, the kids that are struggling with that kind of an environment and those who are not succeeding and flourishing in the program itself. I'm also curious, do you see, uh, a correlation, and maybe this is a question that the committee would have to find out as well? Um, is there a correlation between the kids that are flourishing and the kids that aren't succeeding in the program right now? The few, um, and those who are just struggling with their environment and those who are just looking to regain those credits? Like, is, between those two, do you see a correlation between those two, I mean, just kind of curious off the top of my head?
I think, um, personal drive and, uh, out of, out of, um, how do we put this? Out of hours support. So the support from eight to three is pretty solid, the support after eight to three for multiple reasons is not. And that's usually the, and then the personal drive. So you can have no support at home, but have personal drive and be super, super successful. But usually if you have no personal drive and no support at home, or you have, um, an addiction problem or a mental health problem, those are usually the four factors.
Got it. Um, but it's also, it's also shown too that those kids that are struggling in mainstream school, when they're in that environment and you have someone coming over trying to get a credit retrieval, it's also been shown that those kids coming over for credit retrieval tend to gravitate towards those kids that aren't doing well in, uh, mainstream school, and they're, they tend to not stay on that beaten path and have that personal drive to continue to move forward, they get sucked in with those folks that don't, don't take things seriously or have that personal drive as Mr. Stratton said.
And that's, that's, I think, where I think my question was leading into, is I'd like to, to try and make sure that we don't lose those kids on either side. You know, and make sure that the kids that are just looking for credit retrieval and everything, they have an opportunity to do that, and they don't get sucked into another, another course and another path. Um, who, I, I forget the gentleman's name, the gentleman that pretty much ran the, uh, step-up, uh, uh, program up in Primeville area, you remember his name?
In Primeville, Dave Knowsley.
Yeah, we're, I can get contact. I, I think what I was hearing was he was, he might be interested even coming down here and helping us, maybe give us some pointers and different things to try and help make the program a success, because he was extremely successful with the program in Primeville. So it might be worth getting in touch with him as we kind of are making this transition and forming this committee, uh, to try and find a solution to the problem. So, okay, awesome.
So, uh, Mr. Stratton, would you, would you be the, the person from District seven that would be on the committee?
Yeah, I would, I, I kind of penciled out, you know, one commissioner, because you can't have more than that, correct me if I'm wrong, that. From the school district, we'd use the building principal, the counselor, and the business manager, and then from K C C, probably, you know, look to Chip Massey or ask him for recommendations. And then, and then as a group, we can invite any outside people like you suggested, the gentleman from Primeville.
I, I think that's a good start, and it'd be, uh, be evolving for the committee to bring in our specific ones for whichever meeting or whatever, um, I think that's, that'd be a great start, so.
Yeah, and I think we, Lane, if you could contact all the principal at Paisley and Dave and, and, uh, North Lake, and just so we can have the whole county covered when we start this deal, so everybody can benefit. You know, we might have to spread it out a little bit, um, but we can cover the whole, every kid in the county, um.
Yep, I can do that, North Lake has something really similar to what we run here, um, I believe it's a modular out behind their high school. They're successful again with their same population, but have some of the issues we do also.
Yeah.
What about sports? They'll still be allowed to play sports for whatever school, school district they're in?
Yeah, from what I can tell, because we double-checked that, um, last year, because we had a few kiddos in step-up who were student athletes also, and they were able to play, there is, there is a, um, policy on that, so yes, the off-campus piece, I don't know how that works. Um, if it were to be off-campus and not totally part of Lake County School District, and we were just a support system, then they may not be able to. So I think it really depends on how we design it and, um, register it as a school that would determine whether or not they could play sports.
Yeah, I, I would think should be able to work through that, I, you allow homeschool kids to be able to do sports, don't you?
Yes.
So I, I would think that it would probably be something doable through policy or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm encouraged, uh, for this to be moving forward, Mr. Stratton, I appreciate this very much, um. I know that Mark, uh, has a lot of passion for it also, um, and, uh, the whole board has a lot of passion for our kiddos across our community, so. I can say if, if, probably Lane, for, I don't want to say for you, but Mark will probably be the the one that we, that we work with. Yeah, and I, and I, I'd like to say that you, uh, we'll stay within public meeting laws, but James or myself may attend some of the meetings too, to bring some thoughts forward, uh, because there won't be no decisions made until it's brought to the full board of commissioners and the full school board, so. Um, you may see James or me coming about something specific or an idea. Um, but how soon would you like to, I know with the COVID-nineteens taking a lot of the time, but we, we, I, I think we gotta move forward, even with COVID-nineteen, I think the sooner we get going on this, the better.
I think if, if I can reach out to a few people this week and everybody have a chance to look at their calendars, um, we can start these, uh, virtual meetings as soon as next week, um, because it's kind of fluid, and, and start moving from there. I'm gonna have to, you know, invite people, allow people some time to do their homework, and then come together. Um, I appreciate your, your time today and your input, I apologize that I didn't have my ducks in a row a little bit better, um, but it's been a little bumpy road here in the last three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, no worries.
We've all been on it.
So, so from the county, for sure, at this point, you will have Mr. Albertson and Jake Greer will be the two from the county right now, do the board see it any difference? So, consensus of the board?
Yep.
They're, they're, they're the ones to be the main contact. Don't be afraid to get ahold of any one of us commissioners individually anytime.
And Lane, you got my cell phone number, you do, don't you?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Perfect. All right, any other questions, any other follow-ups?
Nope. Good. I'm excited.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Stratton, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and yes, Mark, I have your cell.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
All right, so we're gonna move on.
Have a good day.
You too.
Here.
We're gonna move on to our next item, we have Pam Ruddick, commute options. So, uh, our, just to move on to the second. Did you have something else on, sorry.
No, sir.
Okay.
Just partaking in that conversation.
Well, uh, go ahead, Pam, commute options next.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, commissioners, thank you for taking time with us today, I'm gonna let Kim Curly talk about the program.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you for, uh, your virtual meeting. If I were there in person, I would hand you one of those coffee mugs, maybe next time on my trip, I'll bring some down. Um, I know Commissioner Winter has been, uh, had heard about our program uh, over the years, during the ASH meetings and some other gatherings that we have been involved with, so I'll very briefly tell you about commute options and then tell you why we're talking about, um, our program today. So we are a nonprofit, um, agency based in Dunn, uh, in sort of seventeen Oregon counties, all on the right side of the state, all the good ones, um, including Lake. And we work to, um, help people get where they're going, um, especially those like Mr. Stratton was discussing, people who may not have a car or the money to operate them. So, um, especially in the rural parts of our state, this is really important to get folks to the services that they need to get to. So, we, um, normally talk about riding the bus and carpooling, but those are not very popular right now. In fact, I see that you're socially distant from each other in the room.
I was wondering how you'd go to the animal rescue.
Um, grabbing your neighbor and bringing them to town for grocery shopping, it's probably not gonna be the most popular mode right now, but it has really spiked our members for teleworking. Um, I'm not sure what the county employees, um, are doing, but I would assume that some of them are not coming in the office every day anymore. Uh, so when we, um, talk about walking and biking with kids, um, telework, carpool, uh, riding the bus, enhancing bus services for especially those older, um, people in our community who do not drive or should not be driving anymore. Um, we've actually even been talking a lot about telemedicine, so being able to see your doctor on a call like this instead of going into the clinic, um, to reduce your exposure to, um, other things. So, um, the way we give incentives to adults is, um, through a website called Get There. And Get There is, um, a way to log the trips that you make by not driving alone. And when, um, a person logs forty-five trips, they receive a twenty-dollar gift card to the local business. So Lake Gibson Hospital has been a partner for a number of years, and actually, in twenty-twenty, they discontinued their membership, so I don't have any, um, commute options partner, uh, agencies or businesses in Lake County right now. So the app to do is to consider operating this program through us for Lake County employees. Um, Clement County, Dishut County, and Crip County are all partners, so those, those county employees love their trips that they make by walking, biking, carpool, transit, telework, and then we administer that reward to those individuals into their workplace. So it's very little work for, uh, your staff, we kind of do all the heavy lifting. And there is a permanent dues, um, that you pay per active user, so I can tell you more about that if you are interested.
So, Kim, over the years, I've, I've tried to figure out how we make commute options work in Lake County because of the work. So, Kim, over the years, I've, I've tried to figure out how we make commute options work in Lake County, because it works so spread out and, and everything. I don't have the absolute answer to that. With the COVID-nineteen, I like the thoughts of commute option being able to pick up stuff for people or whatever, that side of it, if I heard you correctly.
Mm-hmm.
So. I, I really don't.
So at the state level, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go right ahead.
Oh, at the state level, we've been talking about using the platform, the Get There platform, for, um, trips to pharmacy, to grocery, to other things. Um, but if you're needing something and your neighbor sees that on the bulletin board, they can go get that item through you, so you don't have to make the trip. So that's more of a, a side use of the system, you know, it's basically an international company called Ride Amigo, it runs this ride matching platform, and that's what it was designed to do. But we're looking at other things that our folks, you know, need, um, right now during this craziness that's going on. Um, so we are talking with ODOT, who funds our program, about, uh, additional services that we can provide, um, to residents, especially in the, in the more rural areas.
So, so really, the only, does this fit with special transportation at all? That's the, really the only service that we have in Lake County, uh, as far as.
Right, the elderly disabled transportation, yeah. Um, I'm, I serve on the Oregon P T A, the Public Transportation Advisory Committee, and we've been, you probably have heard about the S T I S, S T S consolidation. Um, and when our legislative session fell apart, uh, that consolidation also went off the table. So the money, um, the ten million dollars that, uh, ODOT was, or that, uh, legislature was giving to S T S is kind of being backfilled by the special, or the, um, debt money. Um, so, yeah, the timing of all of this is really unfortunate, but this project, we're really gonna start rolling out in all of our counties in the state in twenty-twenty. And of course, public transportation has had to cut service and even close, um, the kayak service up in Hamilton area that's not operating at all, because all of their drivers are over seventy years old, so they do not feel safe driving the public around in a bus. So, um, you know, we're taking this time to kind of reach out to some of our partners and friends who maybe haven't used the program before. Just to see if it would sit in as a benefit to your employees.
But, I'm, I struggle, you know, I, I, if we talk about county employees, um, we're total countywide between eighty and ninety employees. That we all live different places, there's no, I, I can't, I can't figure out how we can get this, this going. I, I really can't. Uh, and you say the hospital, they fell out of it, they were the ones that, the only one in Lake County that had signed up. Did they, did they have any success at all, or any records of it working?
We had, at, at the height of the program, we had about twenty people u- utilizing the incentive program. And I have to tell you, a lot of us live in town and were able to walk or bike over to the campus. So, you know, I do appreciate that Lake County is very spread out and not, almost nobody lives by where they work. Um, I get that. So, maybe, um, I sent Melanie a couple of handouts, maybe you could mull it over. Um, the cost of the program is twenty dollars per active user per calendar year, so it's a very, very affordable benefit. And if you are, um, enforcing or allowing teleworking right now, it's a really good time to get people engaged in checking those trips. Um, you'll appreciate that ODOT really loves to see the data on how many miles we're saving off the road, especially in our more rural areas. Because if we can take trips off the system, we don't have to maintain and rebuild and remove snow and all that as much as we would have to if everyone was driving by themselves.
Well, if we could get, get Commissioner Williams to walk to work from somewhere like.
They wouldn't have to deal with. This is only a hundred and sixty miles round trip.
Can we talk?
Oh, my God, well, you might wanna bring your horse.
Can we talk a little bit about the telehealth?
Oh, the telehealth?
I think the telehealth thing would really work. Uh, my wife works for a provider here in Lakeview, and they've been doing all of their clients over the telephone.
Oh, great.
I think that, I think that something like that would very well be beneficial to our community. The new normal, nobody knows what the new normal's gonna be. Nothing's going to be the same ever again as it was prior to this. And so I think we need to be creative on how we do things from now on. But that's something that I think would definitely work, um, in the new normal.
So what I'd kind of offer to do is, um, I have a lot of articles and new content on our website. I'm happy to share that information with Melanie, and she can use it, uh, steal it, use it in the newsletter, post it at State Way, or however you wanna do that. Um, the other thing I will mention is that the Get There Oregon website is free to use for anybody who works or lives in Oregon and is over the age of eighteen. So that is free for anybody to, uh, get on there and use. Uh, the incentive program is the piece that does pass, um, does partner dues, so. It is available right now to you, whether you, um, go further with us or not.
So this, this might be something, I'm, I'm trying to get it to fit where we could make it fit in Lake County, uh, through our wellness program. Where the commute options, uh, we do have some people that routinely they walk to work, and they would qualify for the gift card if they done it forty-five days in a row, correct? Is it forty-five days in a row or forty-five days through a year?
It's forty-five days total, and they never expire, so if you had a person who's walking one day a week, it might take them a whole year to earn the gift card. We just, um, charge you per year, so those trips never expire. If it takes you five years to earn it, then you can go get home.
So as to sign up, the cost to the county, say that again, Kim, please.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars?
Twenty dollars per active user per calendar year.
And that's for all of our employees to participate?
So, right, if you ju- if, uh, a person never uses a commute option and they never log a trip, we do not charge you for that person. So it's only the people who are actively earning the gift cards that we pay for. So if you start out on May first, we would roll out the program, let everybody know about it, individuals would sign up. And then in about three months, I would look and see how many you have and assess the fee at that time. And then we redow every December.
Okay, so, does the board think this is something to send to the Wellness Committee to take a look at?
I would, I, I, I'd be fine with sending it to the committee to take a look at. At this point, I'm just, I, I, I'm not sure how we can fully implement the program.
We don't have a lot of commute options that have been walked and not bicycling, that's, that's the, the challenge here, you know, we.
And we're looking at the countywide picture of this, you know, and it's just kind of, I'm not sure, the logistics are, I would, I would be fine with the Wellness Committee looking at this and and kind of mulling over some of the questions and, and how to implement this, and then maybe bring something back to us if that's.
Well, and hopefully maybe a presentation from Kim and Pam to the Wellness Committee, so.
Okay.
What do you think?
That would be great.
Really? Yeah.
And, and we're Melody's special transportation, if there's a fit that way too, of any fit, that, that's our only transportation source we have. I don't know that it fits at all, but anyways, so we will ask Melanie to follow up with you for our well, she's on our Wellness Committee.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
She's the chair.
Great.
Okay.
Perfect, and I have her email, so that's even better.
Yeah, a- any other questions, or Melanie, do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you ladies very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, have a great rest of your meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Kim, thank you, Pam.
Bye now.
Bye.
Okay, on our agenda, we're, um, I did want to go back, if, if the board pleases to talk a little bit about the Step Up program. So Mark, a couple of my thoughts, um, I'm gonna go ahead and give them, even in a public setting, for possible, um. Funding is always a struggle, and sustainable funding, that, that's what happens, programs get going, then the funding starts going away. So you gotta look, you know, at the vision, the way I see it, some way to make it sustainable. So I wrote down possible things, you know, you, you got mental health, might, there might be some dollars for mental health. Because of sometimes some of these kiddos are getting some counseling and stuff, and, uh, the Step Up program can really, really help those kids get through, because some of them come from families that are struggling. And so there might be, as your committee's working on this, look at, is there any dollars to leverage there? Why not call them their daily fund, whenever you're trying to get kids, it's not always about just getting your college education, getting that for them. You never do no butt work.
And different things like that.
Yeah, yeah, it might be placed, I even wrote, wrote down the hospital, I don't know, right now's a bad time to talk hospital for any funding, but those came to the top of my head, you know, and you've got K C C down shortly. And this, this is totally out of the blue, because of, the other major cost is an off-site campus. You know, and rent, lease, or however it would be. So I think you bring the town in, and they have the kindergarten, I call it, that's been mothballed, that is of two certain standards. When you find out what standard, maybe they can become a partner, and it's a lease for a dollar, five or ten years, it's sitting there doing nothing. And it might be that there's some investment of, one down by the park, yeah, that, it sort of fits when the kids get a break.
And you get a community block development grant for that too?
Possibly.
Right?
Yeah, possibly.
Bring that up to code.
Yeah, so just as I'm sitting here thinking, because I'm pretty encouraged about it, the, the one other thing is that we use Intubator building down there and everything. There is no reason why, hey, there couldn't be, because the classrooms aren't that big, that, that could be an off-site campus, and that means the classroom was some remodeling too. So just throwing out some, that's where my, I usually, the person who comes up with some different ideas or different things, more in structural, that type of thing. So my mind's really a bit more, I wanna throw those out to you as you're, you get set on this committee. Might throw them out, or it might be some, get you going down, you know, well, out. At the height of it, I think Ted had twenty-two or twenty-four kids in there. Half, I would say half. Well, I had thirteen kids in that, that were, that I was kind of thinking out of, that amount, so more than half. And then, pretty much, most of those, we're seeing in the mental health professional hall, so. And so, yes, I mean, on both of those, the things with like K C C and the school district and, and these other organized places. They usually come with a set of rules.
Yeah.
And, and the rules are what caused this to fail. I mean, lose the, like, yeah, the Wyoming, there were certain things that they had to meet, which took out, well, it only ended up being where we only had one kid that met.
The criteria that is.
The criteria out of the whole deal, and so I don't wanna say there shouldn't be any rules, what I'm saying is, is that we have to be fluid, and, because every one of these kids learns different. And Ted was so good at pulling that out of them. It's not like they were, weren't able to learn, he was able to find out how they did learn.
Definitely.
And, you know, some kids are just socially awkward, and, you know, they don't learn in this regular school, because bullying, different kind of pressures and. Well, and, and some of them's advanced to a different type of advancement than the school system, they just need to get that education, because they're ready for real life. They want, they wanna get their education, get that, and go on. And it, it, just like you say, the segment that is not the traditional teaching method, you have to. Well, and, and these kids are tradesmen, and would, you know, they might not know how to do calculus on, and different things, but they know how to fix a car, they know how to and hook electricity up, they know how to plow, you know? And what are we pushing at K C C right now, the trades? And that's, this is raised by K C C's such a great partner, and hopefully, we need some other financials, because these are the type of kids that would go on K C C during trades, right? Anyway, I, I just wanna throw those things out there, Mark, um, that you, you've been there, done that, worked with them. Um, I've been on the outside of it, doing the, my, my side of it, I'm excited about it. So, um, I'm glad you're gonna step up.
Yeah.
Anything else, before the board?
Not really, does anyone on the phone got anything? Is there anyone on the phone?
Couple of James touches.
Yeah.
Sorry, money.
I looked at it earlier, I was thinking, I wanna push that button right there. I was reading myself.
If we do have a call at three this afternoon on the economic recovery, uh, three o'clock, I don't believe I'm gonna make it, I gotta call.
Hey, board, this is Darwin.
Hey, Darwin.
Hi, Darwin.
Hey, sorry, I actually have been on, um, had a rough night here at the home, so I haven't made it into the office yet, but just wanted to let you know, I, I've, uh, got my commission all scheduled, uh, for next week, and um, it ends the calling meeting, however, um, I was always planning on having our chair and myself in the room, in your bedroom there. Uh, but a couple of board members have also expressed interest in, in being in the room, so I will screen them prior to the meeting, and hope that'll be fine as they're, well, aboard for, uh, for the county. Um, and, you know, I think keep moving forward, I told you before, that for land sale, we may need to extend again. Um, you know, I, I certainly think that's probably, um, a possibility, so, I'm not still on my radar. Um, but as we get closer to, to, uh, Candace and her delivery, there, uh, you know, you'll see me probably in the office less and less, as we try to make sure she gets to her, uh, target date of, of May eleventh. Um, which is still only thirty-six and a half weeks, so, um, just wanna make sure she's not overdoing it. But to date, she's made four hundred and, four hundred and fifteen masks, and, uh, you know, there's still a few orders that she's, she's got in there, so I'll let you know if, if, uh, you know, if anybody else needs it, so.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you for the masks, uh.
So, uh, Darwin, we, we ran the Fair Board Meeting through here, we have, um, three of us here, two call in, it worked very well. Um, so I think on your finding commission, you pre-screen them, and if they qualify to come in, no problem. Um, you have to let them in, because the door, if it is pre-screening, uh, the land sale, didn't we move that till June?
Yeah, we moved it to June, uh, and so I do have to start publishing, uh, four weeks prior to the actual sale, so that would happen, um, you know, the first, I think it's that first Wednesday in, in May, so. Um, just, you know, if, if we're foreseeing that it might not happen, you know, I need to keep that timeline at four weeks prior to the sale, so.
Well, Darwin, I'm, I'm going to speak the whole. Well, Darwin, I'm going to speak. The whole board may jump in on this. We don't see no need to change that. We need to get back to normal as soon as we can. And that's becoming a real consensus, especially across the eastern side of Oregon, so.
I am gonna jump in.
I knew you would.
This is Commissioner Williams. I was on our AOC call yesterday, and we had a very, it turned into a quite contentious call, actually, at one point. And, but it was very good, very constructive. And we are going to need, as a state and as counties, we're going to start having to make some moves to get back to some sort of normality. Even if, you know, it includes the social distancing and the mask wearing and everything. I think it's only prudent that we start moving back in that direction. So at this point, I would encourage us to just stay on track with the June schedule. I don't really see a point to changing that right now. I don't think we've had any data that shows that we should move that back any further than that. And that's not just me, that's the majority of commissioners and counties in the state. And that's kind of where we are right now. The senators and the representatives are kind of feeling the same way, and that's what they're pushing for. So that's probably where we're headed. If I could kind of give you a little bit of that information, maybe that'll help, so. I want to just...
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that sounds good. You know, as far as land sale, you know, I'm not sure how many people will end up having show up at the auction. But, you know, the policy that we have in place already allows for people to mail in the after-sale, which is forty percent for the ones that are being sold this year. So that option is still gonna be available. I will probably update our website just so that it's clear that that option's still available for everyone. You know, having a remote option where people just call in would be kind of difficult. But again, not too many usually sell the auction, so I'm not too worried about that. I need to follow up with Diana Otero and to talk about that property at two twenty North Allen Street still. But she's a nail one extra, if any of you have been contacted by her, but reached out to her. But I'm sure she's still interested in that property for a long-term housing, parking lot at least, so. Anyway, that's pretty much my update now. You know, as, you know, with Candace getting closed, you know, important to keep her from not going into pre-travel labor here, so. But I'm still coming in every day at least for a little bit, checking things and things to move towards, so. I will tell you one last thing on the planning front is that I'm being contacted by a few new solar companies that are looking to do projects in Lake County. One of which I'm kind of having on the radar, another one that's completely new. I'm having a conference call on Thursday. And so we're definitely seeing solar. New Sun's also looking to expand with the new solar rule, going up to nineteen hundred and twenty acres at the county level and not have to go through ESEC. The prior rule was three hundred and twenty, so that's a big deal. I see them wanting to move forward with June applications. And then with the goal exception being required by the new solar rule, if you're over the three hundred and twenty acres, that would probably be suspended for some time in August. So it's a wait out, but everything will come quick, so. And I'll give you more information as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, Darwin. All right, so we will adjourn at fourteen minutes after ten.